And the second one was actually fraud. And that person was serving time. So it's a very low instance of fraud when you have vote by mail. And we do have laws, national laws, to take care of people who would do something that isn't appropriate and may possibly be illegal. So I have submitted to you the Oregon Voters Manual. It's very, very good. And I am asking us to send this legislation forward to the state. Now, the bill after this, or the resolution after this is the same thing but going to HSAAC. And we've done this each term, we've sent it forward. And the reason that I continually stress that we, as a state, should do vote by mail is that we have all of our elections in hurricane season. All of our primaries and all of our general elections are during hurricane season. Plus, we have here earthquakes and lava flows which we're experiencing as we, as I talk, the lava flow is going on. Vote by mail is a wonderful way to make it easy for people to vote. It's about the only way we're going to increase, substantially increase, our voter turnout rate. The League of Women Voters has been supporting this for years. I'm sorry they're not here today. But this is something that we need to do to get out from the bottom of the barrel with the voter turnout that we've got. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. I ask for your support to help the voters of this county. And if there was ever a situation that proved we need to be doing vote by mail, it's the 2014 primary election where we disenfranchise voters. When I say "we," I'm talking the statewide situation. I yield.
Okay. Mr. Kern? May I ask a Ms. Ford a question?
Sure.
Thank you. Is the intent of this to make voting by mail just voting by mail so that there wouldn't even be polling places where people could vote in person so our voting system would be strictly by mail?
Okay. You could make it strictly by mail. The state could do that. Traditionally, though, what they do is they have vote by mail and then they have certain places, I forget how many, sometimes it's based on the number of voters. Say forty, for every forty thousand voters, they've got to have a walk-in place to drop it off, or a machine, or something like that. We can do it any way we want, but the fact, but basically, it's about ninety-five percent vote by mail.
So instead of doing like the permanent absentee or the absentee mail-in that we do, we could have it so it'd be vote by mail. Everybody would get a ballot, but if the person chose to, they could actually go down. There could still be a walk-in, a walk-in place that go down and do that.
Yeah.
So but instead of having to sign up for the permanent absentee, it's, everybody would be getting a ballot in the mail?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
May I, Mr. Chair, may I make an additional comment? Oh, I'll let other people make a question.
I'll just say I support this. This is any way to get the voters out there, make it easier is a great thing. Okay, um, wait. Ms. Willie?
Brenda, at this point, I'm not supportive of this. I mean, I want to hear everyone in part of the discussion. I just want to explain what some of the concerns of the constituents in my district are. One, and for example, in North Cohala, they have a very small post office. They've been trying to get a much larger one. And many people share one mailbox. And there are issues where one person comes and they see a lot of things, they are, you know, trash or other stuff. Many people who aren't part of the same household are going through the same mailbox. So there's no sort of privacy. So there's a lot of concern in North Cohala. And then the other thing is just really a sense of privacy. And some people have expressed, well, this way I know it's all mine. It's not anyone else in my household asking how I'm voting. It's a private thing. And that it makes it easier for some people that are, whether, I'm not saying whether it's a family member, whether friends, or their church, or their whoever feel that they like going and it's right there and it's totally private. And I think the last, the one other concern that's been raised to me is that they sort of like the event. It's sort of fun, exciting. So it's Election Day and some people, for example, in North Cohala, they like that day. And it's maybe it's a more cohesive community than some others, but it's sort of event. So I, I've been asking around and I just want to share the concerns. If, I'll let, if it's okay with the Chair, let you respond, or you can respond later. But, yeah, if she would like to respond to any of those concerns, or if others want to speak, however you want to handle it. I don't really have a direct question. She can...
Well, she can maybe answer her next round.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. You, you, you yield? Okay. Ms. Poindexter.
Can I ask Councilmember Ford a question?
Sure.
Okay. How does, if you do the mail, vote by mail, what my concern is, when I got, my husband went absentee voting, so he got his in the mail. And it looked real confusing for him. I mean, you know, and I had people even ask, calling my home, asking me to clarify how, that, what is a new way to vote because it was just confusing. Even when I looked at that, it was confusing. So if they vote by mail and somehow go into, in the primary, vote one for a Republican or Democratic Party and kind of mix that, my concern is when you, when it, you mail it, it may not then count because you made a mistake, but if you appear in person and you're comfortable with that, the machine catches if something is wrong. And then, you know, so that's my concern. If I would vote by mail and say I did something wrong and my vote doesn't count, you know, at least that machine helped to say, hey, Val, you marked too much in all the different, you know, Democrat, Republican, and I don't know what, I forget what the other parties are, but, so that is my concern, you know, that some people's votes may not count. And the choice of us having to vote by mail now, it's an option. And I don't know if you checked into it with the Elections Office, is, is any of that relevant to, I mean, can you explain if you did speak with our Elections Office?
Okay. I don't speak to the Elections Office on these things. She's never supported vote by mail despite the fact that we use absentee ballots. I can address the other comments that you have made, though.
Yeah, can, yeah, I'm concerned about that.
Okay. Every state that uses vote by mail, or counties in the case of Oregon that use vote by mail, have addressed all of these issues. That's why I sent out the Voter Manual from Oregon so you could see what they do. There are people who say, oh, I like going in and standing in long lines. But we all know that if you don't make the deadline, you don't get to vote. We know that in an emergency, you don't get to vote. And you, in this case, we got disenfranchised. Honolulu, they didn't print enough ballots. This way, everybody gets a ballot who's a registered voter. And also, if you're in an emergency situation, you can get disenfranchised, is what happened here. Long lines are one of the biggest complaints that we have for people that go into a precinct and you have to stand in line. Sometimes it's way more than two hours when their business doesn't let them off. Also, a lot of people cross the island in order to go to work, and two hours isn't going to get them home in time in order to do their ballot. So a lot of us, including myself, vote absentee. And it is a choice at this point in time. But please remember, we're at the bottom of the barrel nationally. And we've done nothing in the la, except the last clerk really went on a major campaign to get people signed up for absentee. But over all of these decades that we've been having these votes, we're still at the bottom of the barrel because we're doing the same thing over and over again. It's not helping.
Okay. So I'm just, I'm, I appreciate you bringing this forward for discussion. But I'm still kind of wanting to do the walk-in. I know I like to do walk-in vote. And if the hur, you know, the hurricane warnings came in early enough for me to decide, okay, so it may hit on Saturday, the voting day, so maybe I want to do a walk-in at one of the locations. And I'm just concerned that, you know, maybe we should, maybe we'll get more walk-in areas that we could be accessible, easily accessible to people around the island. But I like having options. That's my only, I love having the option of doing it by mail or walking in, or if there's a disaster, I can go and go to another site. And I just like options, so thank you.
Okay. Any other members who didn't speak yet or make comments? Ms. Yelfe, you want to go?
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm going to direct a question to Ms. Ford, too, because I like what Zendo said about everyone getting a mail and a ballot because it gives you a chance to vote no matter what. But I also like being able to go to the polls, too, myself. And I'm wondering, you stated, Ms. Ford, that we could maybe re, rewrite or redo this resolution because right now I'm reading it to say exclusively vote by mail, which to me means there wouldn't be any other option. So could you explain that?
The way they, I'm, my understanding, the way they do it in Oregon is everybody gets a ballot by mail, everybody. You can, and then they have drop-off points where you can drop off rather than send it through the U.S. mail. Or you can go to an office of election if you wanted to do it manually. Okay? One of the reasons they do this is cost because hiring all of these people to man the precincts, excuse me, staff the precincts, can be expensive. It doesn't really save any money, though, because you've got excessive printing costs. You have to print everything. So the cost situation is not an issue, but the state, not us, has the choice of what to do. I'm just saying, do vote by mail. Use Oregon as an example. The state can do whatever it wants. All I'm asking is we send this up to the state legislature and let them try to discuss this for the third time and see if we can do better. Frankly, all the, all the issues that have been raised are the same issues that have been raised in Oregon and all these other states. And we're still at the bottom of the barrel because we just refuse to make any changes. It would be wonderful to do walk-in, early walk-in especially, and I have done that many times. But the problem with a walk-in area is you've got to have some place, like a bank vault, where every day, the ballot box can be put in, excuse me, into the vault and locked up. And historically, and I know this because I'm a precinct worker, or used to be, you can't find a place to lock it up, you can't have a walk-in voting because the ballot box has to be locked each night.
But the, the problem that I have with supporting the resolution the way it's written is maybe it doesn't matter about the title, but in the "be it resolved," it says that we're asking the state to establish vote by mail as the exclusive method for casting ballots.
I agree. And that's exactly what I'm asking for. I'm not trying to make this, for this county, it's one way, or that county, it's something else. It should be exclusively vote by mail. That's what the other states are doing who have an excessive eighty-five percent turnout. We're doing what, what we've all done forever, and we've got, we're fifty-one. What we're doing doesn't work. So it's a choice of, if you're going to do something differently and raise the voter turnout, it's got to be something different. This is a solution to do that. It is up to the state, not us, because this is a state issue. All I'm asking is to send this up to the state and have another discussion in view of earthquakes, hurricanes, and lava flows. It's going to make it worse. It's going to make, we've disenfranch, not we, I'm talking generically in the state. We've disenfranchised hundreds, if not thousands, of voters in addition to the fact that we have very low voter turnout. We need to do something different.
Well, I know when, when a person requests an absentee ballot, if they do not choose to use it, they can still go into the poll.
Yep.
And as long as they didn't, I mean, they won't be able to vote twice, but they, okay. So is, is it possible that the state could look at a system where everybody does receive a ballot in the mail, but we still have the option to go into, into polls to vote?
Absolutely.
I'd rather see it say something to that effect, that we look at it, because otherwise, we're going to send the same, you said this legislation failed in the state the last two times it was looked at, so wouldn't we think of creating a different...
Well, it's not up to us as a council to tell, or I'm asking the state to do vote by mail, but they have the choice to amend this and do whatever they want. They can disregard it. They can do something completely different. They can say, well, we're going to do absentee votes, but you can walk into certain areas and, and do it. Other, other places, say for every forty thousand people, you have to have a walk-in location so you could walk your ballot in after you looked at it. I'll tell you something else that I didn't mention earlier. And I hate to mention the state I came from, so I won't. But the state I came from, we used to get a voter pamphlet that was about, oh, three sixteenths of an inch thick. And every single charter amendment, initiative, or whatever was on there, a pro, a con, and the money amount was part of it. People got to sit down in the privacy of their home, read through this, and figure out how they wanted to vote for something. We don't do that in this state. We send out a ballot and we don't send out very good instructions. And Ms. Poindexter just pointed out exactly what's happening, that people don't know how to fill out because our voter instructions are pitiful. The whole point of vote by mail is that we put all of these different things in the ballot that we send out to people, and they've got good instructions on how to use the ballot. They've got good instructions on initiatives and charter amendments and all those things that they have the information they need. If they still want to walk in, then the state can say, on certain locations, you can walk in and submit your ballot personally and stick it in the machine, which would take care of Ms. Poindexter's comment, and yours. But it's up to the state. This at least gets a discussion of vote by mail in front of them. I would like to see us with an eighty percent plus turnout, but at this point, it's what it is. And we can keep doing the same thing, or we can try to set something down.
Ms. Yelfe, you still?
Oh, thank you. I'll yield at this time.
Okay. Ms. Willie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah. I think this is a really good discussion. After, you know, hearing everybody's opinions and looking at this even further, the exclusive method is, I'm having a challenge with. I think it would be great if everybody got a ballot, but to change the way we do it entirely, I wouldn't want to do that because there's a lot of people that really do enjoy going to the polls, or they want to go early walk-in. I know for me, I like to go in and actually put my ballot in there. I think Ms. Poindexter makes a great point when she talks about a potential spallet, a spoiled ballot, that you don't even know. You know what I mean? You're at home, fill it out, you fill it out wrong, it's spoiled, no vote. When you're at least there, you can do that. Something that I think would be interesting is, why not ask to do a pilot program here in Hawaii County? Where we do send out, where we keep it as it is, but we send out mail and, send out mail ballots. Everybody gets a ballot in the mail. They can go that route. Or we can do it the same way. It'd cost a little bit more, but it might be worth it to get that greater voter turnout. And if it actually worked in Hawaii County, then that might encourage the rest of the state to do that. Getting this done on a statewide level might be more challenging, but if we could do it here in Hawaii County, it, uh, we might actually get to see those results. Because if we did it for two seasons and it did, two elections, and it didn't really increase voter turnout, we'd know that this doesn't work for our demographics. Because we are, especially in Puna, I mean, it's, it's different. We have P.O. boxes, it's just, we receive our mail different, we kind of, it's a little bit different. So I'm going to have to say I don't actually support this the way that it's written because it says exclusive method. If it was an additional method, I would, or if it were a, like a pilot program, I think that would be potentially a great idea. So I just don't want to take away the way that we normally, normally vote, too, because that people are, oh, it's just great to be able to go down to the polls. Some people I know don't want to stand in line, but we do have the early walk-in voting. I mean, there's, there's so much you can do, and if you want to vote by mail, right now you can.
Right.
But this would be amazing to see if everybody did get it, like even for one election, everybody got a ballot. We keep it the way that is. What did that do? What did that increase? Did we get another twenty percent? If we did, it'd be worth the money to do that, I think. If it had increased by five percent, maybe not. But we'd be able to look at it at that point in time. So that's, that's how I would support it. And with that, I, I yield. Thanks.
Ms. Willie?
Yeah. And I first want to say to Brenda, you know, I appreciate you bringing this forward. The big issue is low voter turnout. And that's what you're trying to address, and we all need to look at that. And I think, I, for me, I'd like to really promote the options more. You have a choice. You know, I, I'm not totally against what Mr. Kern is saying as a pilot project, but I really, I, I think one of the things is that we really need more education so that a lot of people think you get an absentee ballot only if you're going to be absent. And to clean that up, I think we would get more. So here you have this as an option. It doesn't mean you're absent. You can do it this way. You also pointing out the disaster issue. Why don't, perhaps you want to do it that way. And that if you do request an absentee ballot, that you're not locked into that. I had many people come to me and say, I got an absentee ballot, but I'd really like to go in and vote. Can I do that? So there's a lot of misinformation and lack of information. I also think the, the security issue is significant, making sure that those boxes are in a safe place. One assumes all these things, but then thirty years ago, I was in Maine, and it was the office of the Speaker of the House, from his office, they switched a box. Okay? So these things can happen in this world, in these times. And that is a valid, um, a valid point. And also what Ms. Poindexter brought up about the instructions. So I think we're hearing a lot of important issues. I don't like closing off, I, I like the go-in and being able to go in and vote. And even, certainly like in North Cohala, there's been a lot of people expressing, we share mailboxes. I don't particularly even want to be at home, or my employer, or my someone. Anyway, I want to maintain the, the privacy that I go in to vote, nobody else sees, has access to my, um, uh, my voter information. So I, I still lean against it, but I do want to, that we stay on top of the issue of low voter turnout and how do we address it. And again, I'm listening to all of this, but at this point, I'm still leaning against, voting against this thing.
Okay. Any other members, before I go to Ms. Ford again? And maybe Ms. Ford, you can wrap this up? Go ahead.
I would be glad to. You know, everything we send forward is a group effort. I'll be happy to consider along, I'm sure, with everyone else, an amendment that somebody else would be willing to offer. But nobody's bringing any amendments forward. They're just saying, we don't want to do this. I'm more than willing to see an amendment on this if you want to do it some other way, but, you know, please bring the amendment forward. This has been on the agenda and everybody's looked at it, but, you know, everybody's saying, we don't like this. But I'm the only one proposing something different to get us off the bottom of the barrel. So please, if you want something else, bring an amendment forward. Let's look at it. I, I don't have a problem with that. I yield.
Okay. Any other further discussions?
Ms. Nishie?
Ms. Yelfe?
I know this is a busy time for the opposite elections, but I'm not sure, I don't know the answer to this, so I think I would need to consult somebody that could answer for us, whether there would be a possibility of everyone receiving a ballot in the mail, but also keeping polling places open on Election Day or for walk-in. And I would have to either ask our Elections Division or someone in the state. And so I, I'm willing to find out.
Or we might have to get like state elections here.
I know, but it's a busy time right now, I'm sure, for someone to consider.
So what do you want to, your question is, you wanted to ask?
I'm just saying, Ms. Ford was saying that someone might want to bring forward an amendment. I'm sure several of us would like to see this changed a little bit so we could support a new concept to increase voter turnout.
Well, this will be going to council, so you could do the amendment at council.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Ford?
Thank you. Last one.
Your last comments?
This will be my last comment. I agree that there is time constraints, and obviously, this is not going to be heard by the state until next year. So, you know, I don't know if they can answer the question. Please remember, if you don't know already, the U.S. Department of Justice is already investigating the State Office of Elections over this last mess that we've got in Puna. So I don't know that they're necessarily the best source of information. I don't even know if our own county election is the best source of information.
Okay. Any other further discussions? Okay, I'm just going to make a comment. You guys did get this communication, nine-nine-six-point-one, and it's from me to you members? We just got it. Okay. So it kind of tells you what was the registered voters in each district, in each council district, and also what was the turnout. To me, I think we need to go out and reach out to them and find out why they're not coming out to vote. And that's the bottom line. Because if you look at these numbers, I mean, for example, I mean, well, take my district, District Three, okay? In 2012, we had fourteen thousand forty-seven registered voters. Turnout was six thousand three hundred sixty voters. And I did not have an opponent. Okay? In 2014, the registration went up a little. It went fourteen thousand four hundred sixty-nine, and my voter turnout was five thousand seven hundred ninety-six. And that's also counting, what is that, blank votes and also overvotes. Okay? So that's the total. Okay? And this also, I was unopposed. But if you notice, even though there was no opponent, I still had a number of voters that came out. But if you look at other districts, they were like down. And so that's where I think we need to ask questions to the public to find out, why aren't you coming out? You know, what is the reasons? Right? And then like elections, like, because as Ms. Ford had mentioned, you know, she did this for the past, I think, two terms, she always mentioned about it. But we've been giving them a lot of options, right? Because they can walk in, they can go absentee, they can go mail-in, they can go on that Election Day, right? So you have all these options, but why aren't they coming out? So that's, you know, that's the question that we need to ask them. But let's do a roll call.
Oh, wait. One clarification, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, real, real quickly. Uh, I just want to make sure that these numbers were right for Council District Eight. The registered voters for 2012 were fourteen thousand three hundred ninety-seven, and for 2014, it goes down by four thousand registered voters.
Yeah. Um, we, we, we got this stat, the numbers from elections.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, okay. Just want to make sure the numbers were...
Yeah. Yeah, the numbers was given to, by elections, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Ms. Clark?
Ms. Ford?
Aye.
Ms. Yelfe? Mr. Kanuha?
Kanalua, no.
Mr. Kern?
Kanalua, no.
Ms. Poindexter?
Kanalua, no.
Ms. Willie?
No.
Mr. Shimoto?
No.
Chair Onishi?
No.
Chair Onishi, you have one aye and one absentee.
Okay. Resolution four-nine-nine-dash-one-four leads up to council with negative recommendation. Amendment number, resolution five-zero-seven-dash-one-four.
Resolution five-zero-seven-dash-fourteen requests that the Hawaii State Association of Counties, HSAAC, support legislation to establish vote by mail for all federal, state, and county primary, general, and special elections in the state of Hawaii. Request that HSAAC support state legislation to utilize the State of Oregon Vote by Mail Procedures Manual to establish a vote by mail system as the exclusive method for casting ballots beginning with the 2006 primary election. Reference Communication one-zero-zero. Sixty-five minutes left.
Okay, just, vote by mail before I ask for more. Vote by mail.
Thank you.
Can you guys shut up the mic? Thank you, Jeff. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve Resolution five-zero-seven-dash-one-four? Second by Mr. Kern? Ms. Ford?
Thank you. This is identical, except that it's going to HSAAC because it's a statewide issue. They've always supported this in the past. Again, it almost, it always has died in committee when it gets up to the state. They don't, the state really does not want vote by mail. They really do not. They prefer having the apathy that exists in the state. And for all the reasons that we have talked about, we want to go into, uh, walk-ins, we want to go in and do our, our vote, the proof is in the pudding. We have the lowest ranked voter turnout in the United States. So you guys can vote it down, that's okay, but we're not going to improve unless we do a change.
Okay, Mr. Kern?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yeah, one of the ideas that I had, I think was a good point brought up about the, the absentee or permanent absentee, which has the, um, connotation that you're not gonna be around. What if we just change that to choose to vote by mail? Instead of absentee or permanent absentee, the same thing, you can just request, hey, I wanna vote by mail, which it just changes that, like, I'm gonna be here, it doesn't matter. I just wanna vote that way. Um, still feel the same way about this reso, but you know what I mean? Like that might actually just change that. Instead of absentee, it's vote by mail, just with that. But you still have to request it. Doesn't mean everybody gets it sent out. It could help maybe a little bit and wouldn't really cost any additional money. So that'd be my thought, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Here you'll see none. Um, I think once you start voting by absentee, you can make it permanent. And then they always send you your, um, your forms every year, I mean, every, that cycle. Yes, Ms. Ford?
There's two forms of absentee. One is a one-time thing and one is a permanent absentee.
Right. Well, and that's what I'm saying, so they have that process where you can get it, um, you know, like lifetime, I guess, okay? Um, but just to let you folks know, we did have HSAAC meeting yesterday and at the announcement, um, Councilmember Ikaka Anderson had, um, um, I guess, um, Representative, um, Councilmember Stanley Chang, who had couple resolutions that he wanted to put in the HSAAC package. President, um, Reposeau had mentioned that it had passed the deadline, okay? Because we had a deadline set for any proposals from any counties need to be in by, um, when it was like last month or early this, um, this month or something like that. So, because yesterday we did vote on the package already. So those, um, items or that was on agenda will be coming to the councils now already for vote, okay? And that will become our legislative package. So he kinda, Mr. President Reposeau kinda mentioned that this ones that are being proposed by Mr. Chang might not be able to get onto the, um, onto that package because if you start letting this go, then it's like, don't since we set a deadline. Okay? So just something for you guys for information that what happened yesterday. Okay. So Madam Clerk, roll call.
Ms. Yehf?
No.
Ms., Ms. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Kanuha?
No.
Mr. Kern?
No.
Ms. Poindexter?
No.
Ms. Willie?
No.
Mr. Yoshimoto?
No.
Chironishi?
No.
Chironishi, you have one aye, seven no's and one accent.
Okay. Um, Resolution 507-14 moves up to council with a negative recommendation. No motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We gotta, um, okay. What's gonna happen is we're gonna, we're gonna postpone Communication 383.1. So- Mr. Chair? Motion two.
Uh, motion to, uh, remove Communications 383.1 from the table.
Thank you very much. Okay. Seconded by Mr. Yoshimoto. Okay. Um, any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right. Okay. Um, any no's? Okay. So now we have a motion to postpone Communication 383.1 to the call of the chair. Okay. Motion by Mr. Kern, seconded by Mr. Yoshimoto. Any discussions? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Go to the polls. Okay. Motion carried, so Communication 388, 383.1 will be, um, postponed to the call of the chair. No motion to adjourn? Okay. Motion by Mr. Kern, uh, seconded by Mr. Yoshimoto. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Go to the polls. Okay, this means adjourn.